Morning, everyone.
Morning, Madam.
I'd like to call the County Council Meeting of January 25 to order. And let's get ready to make the first county grade. A moment of silence for reflection.
Counselor Bennett, here. Counselor Rose.
Present.
Counselor Doncaster.
Present.
Counselor Donahue.
Here.
Counselor Eamon.
Present.
Counselor Girls.
Here.
Counselor Hunt.
Here.
Counselor Keller.
Here.
Counselor Love.
Present.
Counselor Lynch.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Peckett.
Present.
Counselor Rittier.
Here.
Counselor Ryanwell.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Bisneski-Moore.
Here.
Dispolish your ordinary interests and general nature there. Seeing none, I need a motion to adopt the minutes of November 27, 2019, and December 10, 2019, moved by Counselor Bisneski-Moore, and seconded by Counselor Murphy. Any questions, commissions, seeing none, all in favor? Carrie. My Warden, you asked my very first question, so please bear with me. As we gather in chambers this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of the council and our community that we are meeting on traditional territory of the First Nations. We would like to thank the O'Goughan people and express our respect and support for their rich history, and we are extremely grateful for the many continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. Members of County Council, during the month of January, I attended the fifteenth meetings on county business. From January 8th to 10th, I attended amongst Counselors Jennifer Murphy and CAO Paul Morrow, the inaugural meeting of Eastern Ontario Works Caucus held in Kingston. During this meeting, the 2020 Chair Vice Chair were claimed, and the caucus prepared for the meetings to be held at the Roma Conference. We also met with some Ontario MPs and MPPs, including our MP, Sheriff Galan. The meeting coincided with the funeral of Premier Doug Ford's mother, so a member of MPPs sent their regrets. I was given a very warm reception by members of the EOWC, and I'd like to thank passport and Murphy for all the efforts in making sure I was introduced to her former colleagues. From January 19th to 23rd, 2020, I attended the Roma Conference held in Toronto. The County of Brentwood had two delegations. I accompanied Counselor James Rose, Mr. Morrow, Ms. Lepine, and Ms. Lepine as a member of the Honorable Todd Smith, Minister of Children and Community and Social Services regarding a number of issues, including restoring the system of consultation and collaboration between the ministry and the County of Brentwood to ensure that the government fully understands the diverse challenges and needs of our residents. We also spoke about restoring Ontario Works annual administration funding levels as opposed to holding the budget to 2018 annuals to enable the County of Brentwood to deliver high-quality programs to all individuals in need across the county. We also brought to the ministers' attention that the County of Brentwood has always budgeted below the provincial OWW allocation. We also requested support for additional funding through the Ontario Works budget to support our human services integration planning in Pembroke. And we explained that we are seeking further opportunities to collaborate on key initiatives impacting social services, such as redefining the definition of disability for ODSP and the transformation of employment in Ontario. I want to acknowledge the excellent presentation done by Counselor Rose. He was very professional and well-prepared. We were given more than our lot of time, and I believe our requests were received well, I will only tell. Along with Counselor Bob Sweet, Counselor Rose, Mr. Kelly, and Mr. Morrow, we met with the Honorable Steve Clark, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, to better define how to propose changes to the PPS who affect the County of Brentwood, and to review possibilities that could be incorporated into our future official plan updates. Counselor Sweet made sure our message was clear. We are confident that our approaches provide solutions in a rural context for the people of rural Ontario while maintaining the integrity of appropriate planning methodology. While the minister was very willing to listen to us, he did suggest some additional avenues for us to pursue in Queen's Park, which I'm sure Counselor Sweet will address at a future Development and Property Committee meeting. During the Roma Conference, the Eastern Ontario Works Caucus also held several meetings, including with two delegations. At the EOWC inaugural meeting, I offered to speak at Roma on behalf of the caucus on the issue of childcare. It was my privilege to do so, first with the NDP caucus and then during the multi-ministerial meeting, where we also presented on paramedic services, public health, affordable housing, Eastern Ontario Regional Network, long-term care, and joint conserval liability. On Saturday, January 26th, I participated in a puck drop at the law group's tournament held at the Deep River Arena. This event was a fundraiser for Big Brothers, Big Sisters. After a hiatus of 11 years, this vital organization is back serving the youth of Brentwood County. Also today's Bell Let's Talk Day. Let's all join in the conversation behind each other. None of us really know what our friends, our neighbors, or our family are going through. However, I will remind those assembled here of the following: the County of Brentwood, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my address for this session of County Council. So, under delegations today, it is my honor to publicly announce that Accreditation Canada has recently bestowed on Bonnershire Manor its highest standing, accredited with exemplary standing. Bonnershire Manor has been accredited long-term care home for 16 years. Following a recent accreditation renewal process, Accreditation Canada staff wrote in their report that Bonnershire Manor has gone beyond the requirements of the accreditation program and demonstrates excellence in quality improvement. Of the 470 parks, quality standards applicable to long-term care, the Manor met or exceeded by 99.8%. This commitment of excellence means Bonnershire Manor residents, whose legacy is this incredible county in which we live, are cared for with compassion, dignity, and respect, and their individual needs, as well as the needs of the entire Bonnershire Manor community, are addressed each and every day. This award not only acknowledges our outstanding frontline and management staff, it is an affirmation of the tremendous hard-working commitment they display every single day, along with the active support of resident and family councils. This recent award means that our long-term care homes, Bonnershire Manor and Mary Shilaj, supported by both the County of Brentwood and the City of Pembroke, are now holders of this highest distinction. I sincerely believe the launch of the Butterfly Approach is the next phase in our goal of providing quality, safe, and person-centered care to our residents. It is now my privilege to ask Ms. Shelley Sheedy to bring herself and her staff, as well as Counselor Mike Donahue, to come forward to accept this award on behalf of Bonnershire Manor. Congratulations, everyone. I'm just going to watch Ms. Sheedy say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I'll keep it very brief, and unfortunately, management team has just laughed, but I just wanted to, they can probably hear me. But I just wanted to make the note that the accreditation process is a four-year cycle, and soon as you finish one, you start right back up again. And this team worked incredibly hard to bring us to this highest standing level. And I just wanted to really emphasize that as hard as they work, it's also the frontline staff that are there on Christmas Day, and Canada Day, and every weekend, and every snowstorm that provide that quality care. So this team represents the 250 staff that are back at the Manor right now providing that care. Thank you very much.
Counselor Donahue, should we go? Thank you, Madam Warden. I want to echo certainly the comments of Ms. Sheedy. It seems that I've been imbued with serendipity, which is, it was my honor to kind of tag along in this and be present when this was happening due to the outstanding staff that are here. I'm pleased, actually, that it was 99.8 because perfection can remain a goal now. And I think that we aspire to that. My comment here is from the CAO to Ms. Sheedy, to all of the senior staff who were incredibly well-prepared, while I just happened to be sitting in the room surrounded by these capable people. Many of the staff approached me individually afterwards and said, of course, Mary Shilaj is now into its second term of exemplary standing, and that it was through no small measure, Ms. Sheedy's leadership that has now achieved an exemplary standing at Bonnershire Manor, that it has been an accredited facility since 2003, but this is the first that it has reached exemplary standing. And several staff commented that it is typical for Ms. Sheedy to be self-effacing and standing in the back of the picture, but a great deal of the acknowledgement for this standing certainly rests with her.
Mr. Morrow, correspondence.
Thank you, Warden. All correspondence, as you refer to the appropriate committee.
Thank you very much. With council's indulgence, I'd like to move under Committee Report's Item F to follow Development and Property. So Finance and then Development and Property, Health Services and Social Services, Provincial Modernization. Then I'll turn it over to Chair Murphy, Finance Administration Committee report, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Lead your Finance and Administration Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. For your information, number one are the new Smoke Free Ontario signs. There's some information there and some legislative update from Hicks-Morley. Number two is the Treasurers' Report from November 30th. Number three is the Ministry of the Attorney General, the Part III downloads. Number four, sorry, scrolling through here. Number four is the impact assessment that's coming. Number five is the 2019 annual repayment limit, which Mr. Faust spoke about also at our budget meeting. Number six is Ministry of Finance, a message from the ADM, Donie, advising some decisions on the education property tax. Number seven are the insurance rates for 2020. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our media for putting this out in the public. I've had several calls about, you know, why we were so lucky, and some calls from business owners saying, wow, you know, my insurance went up 15% this year, et cetera. So it's out there in the fray, and I think that that's, the 4% is actually good news. Number eight is our audit planning letter for 2020. Number nine, our 2020 municipal pension center. Number 10 is the CRA mileage rates. Number 11, under resolutions. So this is Resolution Number FACCC 20-01-04, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. Whereas the Association of Municipalities of Ontario represents the interests of municipalities on policy and program matters that fall within the provincial jurisdiction, therefore be a result that the Council of Appropriations of the County of Brentwood supports that Counselor Eamon run for reelection to the Rural Caucus, and Eamon Board of Directors, and by extension to the Roma Board of Directors. And be further resolved that County Council approves the funds be included in the 2020 budget for Counselor Eamon's attendance at the Eamon Board meetings for the period August 2020 to August 2022. Again, under resolutions, we have a resolution about our Service Delivery Review Project, Resolution FACCC 20-1-5, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that Council approves that the June meeting of County Council be held in the Rotary Hall at Bonnershire Manor, and the August meeting of County Council be held in the auditorium at Mary Shilaj. And number 13 is simply the changing of the signing authority. You can see that obviously now Warden Robinson will be taking over from myself. Number 14 is our Eamon, our membership fee, which is $9,274.82. Number 15 is our FCM membership dues. I know that there was a bit of sticker shock, there was a lot of discussion about this $20,000 at Finance, and then hearing from Counselor Doncaster, who is our representative, he feels that it's absolutely a worthwhile entity to be a part of on the board and with his other duties. And we obviously, as a whole, want a seat at all of these tables, so that was our recommendation. Under bylaws, our shared cost services for long-term care homes, just a MOU between the City of Brentwood and the County of Brentwood, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair, and Committee members Rose, Doncaster, Donahue, Hunt, Peckett, Robinson, and Sweet. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Thank you, Chair Murphy. We'll start off at the beginning of the report. Any comments or questions, Madam, number one? Two? Three? Four? Five? Six? Seven? Eight? Nine? Ten? Your resolutions. You heard the resolution? Is there any comments? Counselor Eamon.
Thank you, Warden, and Committee, and Council for your support. It's, I think, you know, been a voice for our community and can continue to seek more responsibility and access within Eamon. And this year, should I be successful, I will be trying to retain a position on the Health Task Force and probably the Modernization Task Force as well. So I have some internal goals I'm working on in terms of getting more access to information. Thank you.
Counselor Bisneski-Moore.
Regarding that, just a question to Counselor Love, does she represent the county for Roma?
I represent all of Zone 6. So the County of Brentwood is part of Zone 6, but I also represent Hastings, Lexington, and several counties, so it's sort of... Somebody has to cover your costs. Who covers your costs? Actually, Roma covers my costs. Oh, good. Okay, thank you. Any further comments or questions? And I would say, Counselor Eamon, you can count on our support there, and we'll do whatever we can. You're an excellent voice for the County of Brentwood. All right, I'm going to say, all in favor of the resolution? Carrie.
Do we vote separately? Do we vote separately on each resolution?
On each resolution? Do we do it? We don't? I'm getting shocked. Somebody suggested...
I never remember voting on each side, so... Unless it's pulled out and it's...
I'm in committee vote?
Okay.
So there we go. So now we don't. All right. Okay. Number 13, signing authority. No, I, I, I just skipped 12. Anyway, number 12. 13. 14. 15. 16. Report as a whole. Go ahead and move her.
So does Madam Warden?
Thank you, Madam. All in favor? Carrie. Now, all on, Counselor Sweet, Development and Property, please.
Thank you, Warden. Member of County Council, lead your Development and Property Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Number of information items in place of the Division Activity Tracker Report, which can be found between pages 79 to 84. Item number two is found on page 86. It's the letter from the Counselor Laureen Cameron, the Provost of Brentfordshire, in an attempt to move forward a 20 exercise between the County of Brentwood and Brentfordshire, and we see the positive reply back from the, from Brentfordshire, that there's a willingness to move this particular initiative forward. This is being done from a point of view of economic development and tourism, cultural exchange between our two communities. Staff will be moving forward a little bit later on with overtures to Brentfordshire, to cement this relationship. Item number three, the Tourism Media Coverage can be found on ZBZ 7th, pages 90. Brentford County Forest Audit, pages 92 to 94. It doesn't appear that there's any problems going forward with this, that the draft results appear to be positive, so we're looking forward to seeing what's been placed. Again, on item number five, I look for success of the forestry industry's sector strategy. LPB London, page 94, it's based on the feedback, there's four areas that are identified to develop a strategy, and you can see them there. Unfortunately, item number six is the Canadian experience with Fed Def for the Algonquin Trail application would make for some $713,000 to assist with the Algonquin Trail from the town of Brentwood into the city of Pembroke, and we were turned down on that particular initiative going forward, so we will continue to seek opportunities to try and complete that section of the trail. Item number seven, detailed letters and correspondence from my own relative, the father in town of Pedawawa, looking for access across the trail as part of a trailhead in the town of Pedawawa. The town has spent some $200,000 separating the motorized part of the trail to a passive part of the trail, but we need opportunities to get from the parking area of the trailhead onto the Algonquin Trail. It's positive for that. Item number eight is for changes to the development charges, and for those who are, who do have development charges, the information can be found on pages 99 to 100. Resolution number DPCC 200103, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council directs staff to prepare a letter for Council approval to be sent to the Province of Ontario or the Caucus to Eastern Ontario Regional Network and Eastern Ontario Works Caucus with respect to the challenges faced within the County of Brentwood with regards to cell gap and broadband availability. I believe that was, that was discussed at the URN, or the EOWC meeting. I did talk to the Chair of that at the Roma Conference, and he has, he got this forward. J. Murray Jones, I believe, is the Chair of the URN, and he indicated he understood this, but quite frankly, he did not see any decisions that had been made on a regional basis. But nonetheless, he understood what this was about, and he continued to advocate for that situation. Rate increase on the TOD signage, the DPCC 200103, moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council recommends that a letter under Warden's signature be sent to the Province of Ontario requesting intervention on the rate increase for TODs. That correspondence can be found on page 110. Item number 11, the Algonquin Trail draft work budget, Resolution Number DPCC 200108, moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council sent a letter of the Wardens, signatures to the City of Pembroke and the township of Laurentian Valley, advising that grading and brushing from Greenwood Road and the township of Laurentian Valley to College Way in the City of Pembroke shall be completed in 2020 on the Algonquin Trail, consistent with Council Resolution. You see there, DPCC 19091 passed on September 20th, 2019, allowing the opening of the Algonquin Trail to allow some of the Canadian EE clubs. But you can see just below that resolution, the actual budget for the Algonquin Trail. It's not a lot of money when you consider we're looking at 212 kilometers of trail, nonetheless. We seek partnerships and opportunities, working with various players, including the EE club and the SOV club, to enhance the trail as we move forward. Item number 12 is a bylaw from the Garrison, with regards to the Garrison lease agreement for the Algonquin Trail. We've been working on this for quite some time now, and we finally got something in place, which I think is satisfactory to all the players involved, including ourselves. And see the resolution... And see, the resolution, DPCC twenty oh one oh nine, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee. The County Council passed a bylaw approving the terms of the final lease agreement between Garrison Petawawa, Transcanon, the Pike Blight, and the County of Redford. I did take the opportunity to talk to the Garrison Commander with regards to this, that I felt that would be important. There is going to be a change with the Garrison Commander this year, that I'd like to see this in front of County Council, the three players, I guess, for signature before the Garrison Commander leaves, rather than start all over again. And he's assured me that he will work to see where the heavy impediments are. So we look forward to seeing them happening, certainly within the next month or so. Item number thirteen is, again, is just a housekeeping situation to bring into line with the Ottawa Valley Recreation Trail. Yes, you know, the Ottawa Valley Recreation Trail is the umbrella overseeing organization that consists of the Land County ourselves and the Park of County. And this just brings into play uniformity within the management plan. So it's a resolution of the DPCC twenty oh one ten, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee. The County Council may file one nineteen, ADT, meaning a bylaw to regulate governed lands known as the Algonquin Trail, formerly known as CP, part of, as a linear part, to be consistent with the County of Redford's opening date for all terrain vehicles, season of May the first. Item number fourteen is the lease renewal for Edenville Paramedic Base, a resolution of the DPCC twenty oh one dash twelve, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee. The County Council passed a bylaw to enter into a lease renewal, incorporating the township of Bonnershire Valley to the pattern, kept, pardon me, paramedic base located in the foreman, Bonnershire, street east, Edenville, Ontario, and further, the bylaw may fourteen be repealed. See the background of that? That's a straight call. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair, committee members, Emo, Hunt, Keller, Lynch, Wright, Moore, Robinson, and Mr. Sutcliffe.
Thank you very much, Counselor Sweet. We'll start at the beginning of the report. Any questions under item number one? Counselor Hunt.
Yes, I'm... Thank you to Chair. I'm wondering if on the activity tracker, if we could keep the prior year totals there, just as comparative.
Mr. Dolly, you're on.
Absolutely. I didn't quite catch what was asked. What's the tolls for the previous year? For the previous year? Okay. For comparison purposes, that's what it's called here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions under item number two? Three? Four? Five? Six? Seven? Have you done it?
Thank you, Madam Morton. Just a point of clarification. That's a container shopping plaza.
Mr. Kelly, Counselor Sweet, which one would you like to take up?
It's a Petawawa issue, I suggest.
Okay.
Container shopping plaza, just as it says, a container shop, a whole bunch of containers transported into small boutique-type facilities that can be renewed at a very inexpensive price, so that you could add niche-type of businesses, shows it, within the parking lot that we own in the town of Petawawa, as part of the parking and utilization of the trail. It's unique here to Redford County. It is done very extensively in our suburban environments. A little bit further, to build a building of 500 square feet or 5,000 square feet is like $300 or $400 a square foot. You could buy a trailer or a parking container, which is sixteen by forty or sixteen by fifty, and that would cost you about $50,000. So the cost of Redford is extremely... We see this as an opportunity for economic development and for growth within the commercial sector.
Counselor Donkey.
Thank you for that. And I had thought that, I understand what a container is, so it is specifically what I understand a container to be. It's quite intriguing, because typically, this is something that some municipalities struggle with, like van containers, et cetera, being compliant with zoning laws. So it's quite intriguing to me that some efforts, obviously, have been put in to try to meet some of those impediments to, for new businesses to start up, precisely as Counselor Sweet is referring to with rents, et cetera.
If I could just enlarge this a little bit.
Excellent.
At the end of the day, you would not recognize the work that's done on these containers. They don't have shipping information on it. They are very much modernized. They do not look like trails, let's put it that way. They're very modern, you can stack them, they're accessible. Slit them in, put them down, and you work on it. So the actual container itself might be $5,000 or $6,000. Then you spend $20,000, and you have two, 500 to 700 square feet of retail space in a little bit, appeal to niche-type industries.
Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Madam Morton, and further to Counselor Sweet's comments. I've seen them in several different larger urban centers, and they work very well. My favorite, actually, there's some in downtown Toronto, and they're all, to your point, they don't look like shipping containers. They're almost graffiti, the artwork on them, and they made them like a little village. So it is very intriguing.
If I could, Madam Morton, if you... I can certainly bring in some graphics with regards to what they look like. At the end of the day, it's an exciting project that we're working on, and to enhance the Algonquin Trail, those walkers, some of the parks, the ETV, the cycling, et cetera, et cetera. I'll bring them in, and if there is, if members of council are interested, just to show what it actually looks like. It's quite scary, really, to me. Thanks for the question.
Seeing lots of tens and oddies, I think it would be great for us to see what's going on. It's very interesting. All right. Madam Morton, seven. Number eight. And a resolution, number nine, broadband. Ten, the Todd signage. I did have the opportunity during the Redford County Place reopening to speak with Ray Bonnerberg about the impact that this is having on him in particular. In 2018, the cost of the Todd signs were doubled, and there's quite enough price, so the province cowed off on it. And then this year, again, they're being asked for almost, almost exactly the same amount, more than double. So it has this huge impact on our small tourism businesses, and I think it's very important that... I'm sure Ray can tell, and more than double cost to get maple syrup, who could pay costs here, so it's just not fair. So I'm going to write me writing letter and supporting our small tourism operators throughout County Redford. Number eleven, Algonquin Trail draft work plan and budget. Twelve, Garrison Petawawa lease. Thirteen, regulating government use of the Algonquin Trail. Fourteen, the lease paramedic base. Report as a whole. Seeing none? Go ahead, Mover.
So do we.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Carrie. Thank you. And then now we'll ask for Counselor Donkey, who will lead us to the Health Services and Social Services Provincial Modernization Ad hoc Committee report.
Thank you, Madam Morton. I was just signing pages, so it's good. It takes very seconds to actually name your committee, give it some time. Thank you. We are, to the members of County Council, we are Health Services and Social Services Provincial Modernization Ad hoc Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information, item number one, continuing consultations on public health and emergency health services modernization. Attached is the connected care update, which are the remarks delivered by Minister Elliott at the Roma Conference, just ended, ten, some ten days ago, ended a week ago, I guess. And they were encouraging remarks, I think, given the convulsions that affected pretty much across the sector in health throughout 2019. I am firmly of the belief that these are sincere, intent to really take the pulse of the province, to the agencies that deliver health care right across the province. So it is very encouraging that they have now reached out and are seeking input from those who are both delivering it, but also, of course, cost sharing in that. Resolutions, item two, Health Services and Social Services Provincial Modernization Ad hoc Committee, terms of reference, resolution number PM dash CC dash twenty dash oh one dash oh two, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that Health Services and Social Services Provincial Modernization Ad hoc Committee recommends that County Council approve the revised terms of reference for the Health Services and Social Services Provincial Modernization Ad hoc Committee. The background is attached. This is to refine the terms of reference. Item number three, the Ontario Health Team Development within Redford County, resolution number PM dash CC dash twenty dash zero one dash zero three, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, whereas the County of Redford and separated city of Pembroke represent approximately 107,000 residents in Redford County. And whereas the County of Redford and the city of Pembroke are deeply invested in the delivery of health care in Redford County, delivering paramedic services, social services, and long-term care. And whereas the County of Redford and the separated city of Pembroke are major financial contributors to the delivery of public health. Therefore, be it resolved that the Health Services and Social Services Provincial Modernization Ad hoc Committee recommends that County Council support the creation of a single Ontario Health Team application for the Deep River, Pembroke, Barry's Bay, and Redford area. And further, that staff be directed to continue to participate in the development of the Three Rivers application, exploring opportunities for this application to be included in the broader Health Team application for the County of Redford. And further, that this committee recommends to County Council that in the application for an Ontario Health Team, be inclusive with a focus on patient-centered care. Once again, the background is attached. Of course, council will be very much aware of the incredible dynamic, as I have spoken to or alluded to in my preamble remarks, across all sectors of provision of health care. And it is vital that the interests of rural and remote populations, as represented by the County of Redford, be adequately recognized, and our needs adequately recognized, and our community well-served as we redesign how health services are provided across the province. Item number four, County of Redford Position Papers and Update. Resolution number PM dash CC dash twenty dash zero one dash zero four, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that County Council formally adopts the updated Position Papers entitled Investing in Municipal Health Care to End Hallway Health Care and Social Services in Redford County, and the two one-page handouts, A Partnership for Social Services and a Rural Model to End Hallway Health Care. Once again, background information is provided for council's consideration. Item number five, Planned Consultations for Eastern Ontario, resolution number PM dash CC dash two zero dash zero one dash zero five, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that the Health Services and Social Services Provincial Modernization Ad hoc Committee recommends to County Council that the Warden and Chair of Health, Chair of Health Committee, and staff participate in the planned consultations announced for Eastern Ontario. And further, that the Warden, Chair of Health Committee, and staff engage with the Redford County and District Health Unit Board, communicating the County of Redford's willingness to seek opportunities to find efficiencies between the two organizations, as outlined in the County of Redford's Position Paper. And once again, background information has been provided that is consistent with my remarks that the province is fully engaged, the Ministry of Health is fully engaged in seeking input from the health community. Item number six, Eastern Ontario Paramedic Chiefs Consensus Statements. Resolution number PM dash CC dash twenty dash zero one dash zero six, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that Health Services and Social Services Provincial Modernization Ad hoc Committee recommends that County Council endorse the January seventeenth, two thousand twenty Eastern Ontario Paramedic Chiefs Consensus Statements in response to the Province of Ontario Consultation on Emergency Health Services Modernization. Once more, council, background information is provided. This also speaks to, certainly with much input from the Chief of the Paramedic Service for Redford County, Chief Nolan, that across the spectrum of health care providers and ancillary health services on top of that, the entire health community has been very much engaged across Ontario and is providing information and significant thought and consideration how we are going to revise how health care is provided in the Province of Ontario, bearing in mind that it is the single largest expenditure from the provincial treasury. So it's vitally important that all voices are at the table, and it is my firm belief that all the voices are being listened to attentively. With that, Madam Morton, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members, Bros, Emo, Love, Murphy, and Robinson.
Thank you very much, Chair Donkey. We'll start at the beginning of the report. Item number one, other information. Resolutions, number two. Number three, open story. Number two, Counselor Doncaster.
Thank you, Madam Morton. Just... I would clarify something, just procedurally. Number two is the terms of reference, correct? So even the terms of reference, it is referencing membership in this committee, and there's an addition to that, the Redford County Representative Federation Canadian Mississauga. The reason I'm asking this is because that is coming forward from the Striking Committee, but that hasn't happened yet. So I'm wondering if we're doing these backwards. Door doesn't matter. It surprises me, by the way.
And as you will recall, though, that you were on there as the Chair of Finance, and in the same line, in the terms of references, said comma, FCM. So that's why we were just trying to keep it as a paperwork. Counselor Donkey, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Madam Morton, and thank you through you to Counselor Doncaster for the question. And the Warden is absolutely correct. When the committee was stood up, the terms of reference identified Chair of Finance slash Federation of Canadian Mississauga's member. Upon the Striking Committee in December rearranging all of the committee structure for the county for the ensuing year, the current Chair of Finance administration no longer fills that role, so it had to be split. I guess, I'm somewhat uncertain, you are, does, through you, Madam Morton, does the member from, the Counselor from Deep River, is he a member of the Federation of Canadian Mississauga? Yes. So I think we're...
Well, I just kind of looked at procedurally, you know, Mr. Moore, because Counselor Doncaster is pointing out something that might be, yeah, that might be stuck here on.
Yeah, thank you for that, that ring, obviously. Because it's awkward. But you do make a point in terms of process, but it had to come forward at some point, and we did move the reports around, so I think it can be done either way. It becomes a problem if council rejects the Striking Committee recommendation. Thank you.
It is a card for the worse, yes. Correct, there, but for all, all kind of things, it's just a little bit on. All right, we're good? All right, number two, Redford County, Ontario Health Team trouble. Number four, Position Papers. Counselor Sutcliffe, you're on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm going to use your words, Madam Warden, cart before the horse. As Chair of the Board of Health, I have a motion from the Board of Directors on the direction that we're moving forward as far as modernization. The optics appear that we're not on the same page as the County of Redford. The County of Redford, in motion number five, Resolution number five, says that we'd like to meet with the Board of Health to talk about it. That should have been done prior to a position paper that's giving direction to the province on how we run the Board of Health. So I, I think that the County of Redford put the cart before the horse. You're laying out a position on public health without having had any discussion with the Board of Health. So I do have a motion, and I guess I do need permission on how to proceed, but I'm asking County Council not to support a document until we've had an opportunity to sit down and talk about it. There is, you're, you're, the committee's position and asking County Council to support a document that, you know, it's, it's, it's us. We're, we're running the show there, and we have, we have direction by motions from the Board to talk with the City of Ottawa, we're doing that, and then we get a document like this that says the county wants to do this, and we have not been consulted. We have never sat down and talked about this document, and you're, you're recommending how we, you're trying to shape our future without the Board being involved. So I'm asking for, number five is good, the cart before the horse, Madam Warden, but how do I proceed in asking, I can read what I've written, I have to get a second, and maybe first I'll ask you, do you want this number five to be severed from the report? Well, I need direction, yes.
If you'd like to have, we can sever it from the report, continue on with the remainder of the report, okay? Preferably pass the report, then come back to item number five, would that suit you?
Okay, as long as that's...
We will have that discussion.
Can I have a motion?
Okay, so I need a motion to sever number five. I salute my Councilor Chris Teskemore, seconded by Councilor Peggitt, all in favor? Carry. All right, so with that done, we'll move on, then take with item number six. And the reports of all. Councilor Emo.
Yes, thank you. Just very quickly, in the report of the whole, just talking about the consultations. During Roma and meeting after Roma, and Councilor Luffo's part, Luffo's sessions as well, and so in about a 26-hour period, I met with Jim Pine and Allison Blair, at least four times, probably five times, and Dr. Williams as well. In general, I can give you some observations as to trends that were emerging from conversations. I believe that it's a true consultation, I think, you know, Allison Blair and Jim Pine have put their stamp on moving this forward, and one genuine conversations, but they are, are predisposed to think larger, and, and trying to consolidate any number of significant and important services of public health performance, and, and the health services broad spectrum as well. I should note that Jim is now described as an advisor to the ministry and not the minister. When it was first put out, he was an advisor to the minister, and now it's changed slowly to advising the ministry. So that's, that's a somewhat significant change, and it's worrisome. There hasn't been a confirmation there's going to be a final report issued. There has been some movement, we think we're getting some movement off, or as we're pushing, I would suggest that in any consultation, any, any, any opportunities to meet with the ministry, Mr. Pine, and with the minister, that that be, that be requested, or be a final report, and it be released for discussion. At this point, there is some movement towards a series, possibly a series of webinars to, to review the findings of Mr. Pine and Ms. Blair up to a certain point, probably in February. There may also be a, another round of mini-consultation with EMO and Roma and, and some of the other, some of the other larger organizations. That's not, not been confirmed yet. At present, there have been five consultations, six consultations, I believe, and there are 10 more across the province, one in Ottawa next week. One of the themes that's coming through is, is that public health is community-owned, and municipalities, for the most part, want it to remain that way. They want, they like the, the ability to respond directly and quickly to emerging public issues, the opioid crisis is one instance, vaping, teen vaping is another instance, where local, local health units very quickly left off that and sent out some social media and started educating through the schools and, and other, other agencies about, about the municipal community overall, is supportive of that remaining function that's connected to the community. Through that, governance, community ownership is an issue. The funding question remains critical. The 70/30 is definitely going to cause problems, especially in Northern and Morel, Ontario. This year, it will be tough, but with 10% capping, that, that makes it a little more palatable. We're more worried about 2021, 2022, because we, if you look at the County of Redford, it was 1.4 million last year, it's approximately 1.2 million this year, if you add in the 100% programs that are covered by the province until the announcement last year, late last year, but it now went to a roll into this formula as well. The County of Redford's portion could conceivably hit 2.4 million in the next few years very quickly. And so, other municipalities are finding the same thing, especially in Northern Ontario. In some of our municipalities across Ontario, a 1% tax increase for them is $5,000. So for them to make that, if their contribution is 100, goes up by $100,000, they're, they're in serious trouble. Dr. Williams, Mr. Pine, and Ms. Blair were not able to tell us how that 70/30 formula came about. There doesn't seem to be any, any input or any direction within the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care, or Ministry of Health since that, so they're not sure where that was initiated, whether it came from finance, whether it came from five shadowy people that seemed to operate, you know, pre-reports thinking, we're not sure where it came from. The three of them stressed, especially Ms. Blair and Mr. Pine, they are very interested in seeing some consolidation of back-office functions, and they're in, in lockstep or thinking along the same lines as the position has been taken by EMO and Roma, and the Eastern Ontario Wardens House and Eastern Ontario Mayor's House, which speaks to divesting into the back-office functions, either to municipal activity or regional activity. So they, they are very interested in hearing about that, and I think, if I was a betting person, I would bet you will see that in the recommendations. They recognize the difference in governance, Northern Ontario, due to large geography and single tiers and PSAPs. They also recognize the governance questions for rural Ontario, should it be ported into marriages or with, with larger urban standards. That's, that's a question they, you know, they're going to be asking a lot of questions We brought up with them the OHD being led by hospitals, and how problematic that is for community, community investment in health and public health, and they were aware of that issue, and we also talked about making sure that public health remains, remains a distinct entity, separate from the overall health system, not to get tied into, to hospitals and treating people. And it's health promotion, as we talked about, the natural marriage with paramedics and paramedicine, and so there is, there was a lot of discussion about that. We also talked about sharing information between what I call the systems. Various agencies do not have access to the same information, paramedicine and community mental health and hospitals all don't share the same information. So we talked about that, they're very aware of that, that's come across all throughout the province. That's, very quickly, what I can tell you, EMO and Roma have their draft positions ready, they're going to be discussing our EMO's position tomorrow, I think Roma's is complete as well, and as soon as we get them, as soon as I get the approval, I'll send them out to you, but you will see themes that are fairly consistent with the County of Redford papers.
Thank you very much, Councilor Emo. All of that information, it's vital for us to have background, so we can start making these decisions. Councilor, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just a quick comment on paragraph five. We attended Roma, we asked a still testing question, how come the County of Redford didn't host one of these sites of the nine that are going to be going around the province, you know, where the, the hub of the valley, we've got Aboriginals, we've got French speak, we've got seniors, we've got everybody, and the comment, or the answer was, within two hours. And you can write a letter if you wish.
Thank you. Councilor Spreet.
Thank you, Warden. It's a bit more of a comment or a process that I'm struggling with, just a little bit. Peter had talked about 1.4 million to possibly $2.4 million increase, which certainly sounds like a pretty deal of money. I presume, maybe that's wrong of me to assume this, but the front directive of the MOU between the Province of Ontario, legislated by and agreed to by the Province of Ontario through the MOU and EMO, that any discussion with, or change to any increase at all to municipalities in terms of any future initiatives coming forward by the province, has to be discussed, and recommendations made by EMO and, and the Province of Ontario with regards to this. It seems to me that this potentially has the opportunity, that has the process of costing not just us, but everybody, a whole bunch of money. I'm assuming, I'm assuming, I know when I sat on the EMO board at the executive level, I did make presentations on behalf of EMO, 444 municipalities, on any impact that any funding decisions ever been made by the Province of Ontario. I'm assuming, and I don't know this for sure, but I'm assuming that this has been discussed across the table with the Minister of Finance, or the Deputy Minister, and the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. It just sounds as though this is going to impact financially municipalities within the Province of Ontario, and the province has an obligation to sit down and talk and discuss this with, with the EMO executive as it impacts municipalities. So I don't know whether that has been talked about or discussed. If it hasn't, it should be, and it should be pressed to, to make that happen, as far as the EMO Executive Board talking to the province.
Thank you, Councilor Spreet, and so on, today's group, because I think in the past year, any time some significant changes were announced, the question was to go to the table for discussion. And Councilor Emo.
There has been consultation and discussion, and we're in the process of, of getting back to it. The province has indicated, I think, loosely, that they're looking for $200 million in savings. Can't understand why we're not all jumping on board with hard-hyped people to do our share. So there is discussion, there will not be agreement. There is some ongoing discussion, and there will be more after the, after, after a paper is, after the position paper from EMO is produced this weekend.
So then, right? So then, I think that, that in-depth discussions, and these are serious in-camera discussions, they're on purple paper, you can't even move, you go to the washroom, an OPP officer takes you there, and it's very high, high levels, like camera discussions. So I'm assuming then that this has been discussed with EMO, with regards to, through the MOU, with regards to how this is going to impact financially, and not just us, but 444 municipalities in the paper.
It is ongoing, that's all I can, and, it is ongoing, and the, the EMO position should be clearer, clearer on, on Friday. We're in the process of nailing down the points that we want to make, but we are, it's been brought forward by members a number of times, the, the financial impact, and we're trying to quantify that, to be able to present to the government exactly what it means. But again, you know, discussion, consultation, hopefully will lead to some kind of agreement.
So I'm assuming that EMO, the executives are going to be meeting, once you create your position, the EMO executives are going to be sitting across the table from the various ministers pertaining to that, and Roma sits there, the Chair of Roma sits at that, as do all the chairs of the various caucuses. That's the EMO executive that sits with the, with the MOU group, which is whatever ministry that might be, and senior staff, that sit there in camera to discuss these potential increases that we're talking about here.
Thank you both. Only two that cross, we believe, even as condensed version of the report from EMO, that we actually have that in our hands, prior to our meetings, will stay, will be very helpful. Any other discussions through the course of all? Seeing none, all in favor? Hold on, Councilor.
You need a mover?
Yes, I, I, I heard. Would you like to move it?
I very, very much would like to move it, so move it.
Okay, all in favor? Carry. Thank you very much. So we'll go back to item number five that was severed. Councilor Chris Teskemore.
Thank you very much. So I wanted as a public record that as the Chair of the Board of the Redford County District Health Unit, we were not consulted, therefore, I'm asking that County Council consider this motion. Moved by myself, seconded by Tom Peggitt. Respectfully, we would request that the County of Redford, and I know number five has some direction, but let me finish, County of Redford, meet with the Redford County District Health Unit Board Representatives to discuss their position paper with regards to the public health modernization, and to assist in the clinical evaluation of the papers using the Redford County District Health Unit 12 criteria for public health modernization, and to collaboratively explore their position for a joint submission prior to the end of February 2020. Furthermore, it would be a benefit to the community if the County of Redford would note in their submission on February the 4th, 2020, that the Redford County District Health Unit does not support, nor has not had an opportunity to contribute to the county position paper.
Okay, so I would have to look this up back to Mr. Moro, because you're asking for a new motion as opposed to an amendment of the, of the resolution that's in front of us, so just...
I did say that when I mentioned it was going to be...
All right. All right, technically challenging me on my very first committee, or, County Council here, so I think I have it. So according to Mr. Moro, who is my expert, that what we have to deal with first is the first resolution that was presented to us, okay, we'll deal with that one, then we will have to move on to yours, which at that point will require a, a motion to suspend procedural bylaw, because we do not have a notice of motion for this, so. Am I correct in my, Mr. Moro, would you like to make your...
Thank you. My understanding of, understanding of how to interpret this one with respect to our procedure, procedural bylaw and Robert's Rules of Order, we already have a motion that's been severed, that has been moved and seconded, and that is the main motion that is currently on the floor. I believe that needs to be dealt with first, and then, sorry, to be challenged on that? Okay. Once, once that is dealt with, then the, the new motion that is put forward, that does require a notice of motion, there is a provision in our procedural bylaw to deal with that. At this meeting, should Council decide to suspend the rules of our procedural bylaw with a two-thirds vote, allowing the motion to move forward, and it would require a second and then the, thank you.
Can I ask, I, for Councilor Doncaster, first place.
Thank you, Madam Warden, thank you to both yourself and to Mr.
Thank you to both yourself and to Mr. Moore. I'm just, it seems to me that there may be an opportunity to amend the motion before us, because within the motion as before us, there is direction given that the Chair of Health and Board and staff engage with Brentford County District Health Unit, which was a component of what Counselor Visaskey Moore was talking about. So that's contained herein already, that I would suggest is consistent with what she was seeking. What this does not contain, that I think, and I certainly will, I'm open to make, to ensure that I am correct by Counselor Visaskey Moore, that what she would be seeking as an amendment is that, yes, we, we be directed to participate in the consultations, but as part of our consultations, that we, we let it be known that this position has not been endorsed yet by our CDHU, which would be simply an amendment to what we would be presenting there, as opposed to the need necessarily to introduce a new motion. Again, I will, I want to absolutely defer to Counselor Visaskey Moore to ensure that I am capturing, because I think that the consultation piece is already contained herein, and that I think what she is seeking, and that, that the representative delegation from the County of Brentford make it known that the position being forwarded has not yet been endorsed by the Board of Health.
Counselor Visaskey Moore.
That's good, except also I want it included in there is that we were not given an opportunity to consult, because we weren't. So the province needs to know that, because we're going to be at the meeting on February the 4th with a different position. We're going to look silly. The County of Brentford's saying this thing, and we're saying this about the same subject. So they need to know in that presentation from the county that we were not consulted, and that we don't agree with the position. So if that can be done in an amendment, then that's fine.
Counselor Donahue.
Thank you, Madam Morton. Perhaps this is a point of order. Now I think it has moved beyond something that could be an amendment of what we are doing, it is seeking something entirely different, that I don't think that could be contained within an amendment. On a second issue with respect to the, the point that is being made, I would put in front of County Council that, that in these here, we have in front of us a resolution that has already been adopted to amend the position papers. That is to amend the position papers. The position papers were adopted in June of this year. These are not new positions. These positions were put in front of Council at a special session of County Council on June 12th, as I recall, wherein it was clearly articulated that this was a position being put forward by the County of Brentford. So, so I do not believe that there was any, any attempt to exclude any consultation. These papers have been in the public domain since June of this year.
Thank you. Counselor Donahue, extra question, extra question.
Yeah, consultation, you know, and I believe consultation is being offered, and it couldn't be offered until directed by committee and by motion to council, which it is today. Consultation is a two-way street. And as I said, at the committee meeting yesterday, we had a new CDHU sort on Tuesday, or Monday. There has to be a willingness, different to any agent consultation of both parties, so time will tell if that's possible. I would suggest, though, that next week, when we go to Ottawa, I will be there representing both, both bodies, and I'm quite comfortable with that. I'm quite comfortable in endorsing these position papers, because I feel, I feel that the county as a founder, and also representing a large, the larger community, has an obligation to state its opinion, to preserve what, what is a useful and helpful, public health system in Ontario and in the County of Brentford. I recognize that that may be difficult for members of Brentford County District Health Unit Board to swallow, but that is unfortunate. And we had a small taste of that on Monday. It was a quite spirited debate. I expect a spirited debate tomorrow of the Board, and, and I feel bad for some people that they haven't informed themselves, and I will do my best to inform them. I should note that on Monday, when I attempted to give information about what was going on across the province, in Eastern Ontario Ward's caucus, and Bear's caucus, and Roma and AMO, it was smeared at. And that's something that I should have warned, there will be significant pushback tomorrow, and it may be very profound observations, and it might ascend or descend to profane observations as well. So it will be interesting, and should, you know, the two organizations not have a path that goes forward in lockstep, I'm quite confident that the Provinces of Ontario will recognize the value of having a prepared position, supported by research, as opposed to a knee-jerk reaction supported by something. So I'm comfortable with it.
Counselor Donahue.
Thank you, Madam Morton. Perhaps also picking up on, on the discussion, and I want to, by your leave, also incorporate the conversations put forward by Counselor Sweet. Currently, specifically to the County of Brentford funding for public health, it's 1.452 million. We have, it was put in front of us at budget workshop, and it is going up 10%. It is going up 10% only because it was capped at 10%. So the increase for 2020 is $145,000. That is 10% of the, of last year's levy from the county. In fact, the increase, let me back up. The Board of Health has decided to freeze, has made the decision at budget, in delivering not our budget, but in delivering our sums required for the ensuing year, which we have received in the letter that we saw at budget workshop, that we, the Board of Health has frozen expenditures in 2020, and yet we are still seeing a $145,000 increase. In fact, the increase is $677,000, but it was capped at 10%. What that means is that, but for the capping, the County of Brentford would be going from 1.452 million to 2.002 million, a 40% increase. At that point, at 2 million, and of course recognizing that the City of Pembroke also contributes, the breakdown is that the County of Brentford, through NPAC data, is providing 86.11% of the municipal funding. The City of Pembroke is providing something in the order of 12, and then we're looking at about two, two and a half, I believe, for the township of South Algonquin. Ultimately, the County of Brentford alone will probably be providing approximately 25% of the funding for public health. It is also not coincidence that each of what are referred to as autonomous boards of health, that is, that are separated from the city. So Ottawa Public Health is essentially a department of the City of Ottawa. But within this autonomous, the province also recognized the need to have the majority vote, or the municipal votes. So on an 11-person board at the Board of Health, there are six municipal councillors sitting there. So unmistakably, the intent in providing this structure, this framework, was that the majority would be the municipal, so there is absolutely a municipal component. I will remind the council, as the, also the Chair of Health Committee, that we are providing approximately $2 million towards the two long-term care holdings, that is Mayor Shilaj and LaShire Matter. So $2 million to each out of $16 million budget. To public health, we will be providing $2 million on an $8 million budget. I think it is absolutely appropriate that we have a position. I also likewise will, will acknowledge that from the webinar wherein Mr. Pine and David, Dr. David Williams, the Chief Medical Officer of Health for the Provinces of Ontario, and Allison Blair routinely spoke about the important element, and the absolutely vital element that is local, municipal, that is through our shared services for, for Ontario Works, for housing, for childcare, that these vital municipal connections, this local aspect to public health is incredibly important. It is restating what the position of the Brentford County District Health Unit's position was in 2018, when the expert panel had, had suggested that there should be a linelied Board of Health, and we rejected that utterly, because it was going to still remove the local component and the local aspect and the local knowledge. So the, the issue that is certainly in front of the Brentford County District Health Unit is similar to that across the 35 health units that remain in the Provinces of Ontario, in that how local do we want to be? And I think of the choices certainly between the County of Brentford and the City of Ottawa, I don't believe that the choice is really that difficult.
Thank you for that, Counselor, Counselor Visaskey Moore. I'm going to let you make your comments, but I'm going to ask you whether or not you're willing to the last part of your, because we do possibly have an amendment, except for that last little bit.
Okay, thank you very much. First of all, the debate that is in my motion should take place later, not in these chambers, but I can counter half of what Counselor Donahue has just finished saying. I'm happy to take your time up and, and tell you that, you know, the advantages that the Board has looked at. We've looked at this. We've been working on this, the Board of Health, and then to Counselor Eamon's, and to Counselor Donahue, it would have been in respect. You want us to negotiate, and you don't even consult us. I mean, I am representing the Board, so I'm the Chair, and they have strictly, those members made a motion. The motion is clear that it does not say anything about the County of Brentford, so I'm obligated, and I wanted a public record, that I'm speaking for the Board. The motion says, yes, we want to sit down and talk. We weren't given an opportunity. You're going on the 4th of February with a position paper that has not been talked about. I don't think that it's right that you made a, it's in a paper or it's in a document. It was, all it took was a letter to the Board saying, guys, we need to sit down and talk. That was not done. I'm not, I don't think the Board has an obligation to check every article that goes through to see whether or not the Board of Health has been discussed on this floor. So my motion stands because.
I'm just going to, and just trying, because your motion actually isn't on the floor yet.
Oh, okay, they agree this, yeah. I'm just going to need a little consultation here.
Okay.
Why go to suspend? So after speaking with Mr. Moore, what I'm going to ask Counselor Donahue is whether or not he is prepared to amend his motion. His motion on the motion. You need to keep that to yourself. And then, your, your motions, as you previously spoke, I believe that Mr. Moore has it written down, if you would like to hear his suggestion to you. You also had your hand up, so if there's something else you want to discuss, go ahead.
So I'm amenable to that, but I would like to do that second by your leave, Madam Morton. The first point is a point of order. I didn't feel it required of me that I interrupt Counselor Visaskey Moore's comments, but I believe it's appropriate straight from the record that Counselor Visaskey Moore is most assuredly not here as the Chair of the Board of Health, else she would be a delegation as the Chair of the Board of Health. She is here as a County Counselor for the Council of Brentford, that there is no reason why she could not have been here to speak on behalf of the Chair, sorry, to speak on behalf of the Board of Health, but the appropriate thing for that would have been to, and as a delegation. So I, I take exception to the suggestion that she is at this table, sitting in the chair that she now sits in, speaking on behalf of any other agency than the one that she sits on here. I think that that point of order should be dealt with first.
I'm going to consult the CAO again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Morton. I appreciate that. I will remind the chambers that I have been asked on previous occasions to give answers of, as my, in my capacity as Chair of the Board of Health, as had Mr. Donahue and Mr. Eamon, and while Kathy's new to the game, so, and you, Madam Morton. We have given direction, we have given comments in our capacity as members of that Board. The horse has left the barn. You can't now tell me I can't do it when I've done it several times because of the chambers asking those questions. So I object to that, and I want that publicly known. Why would you now, when it doesn't suit, not allow me to speak as Chair when I've done so before? Thank you, Madam Morton, for letting me speak.
Counselor Eamon.
Small correction. I have never represented myself speaking on behalf of the Board of Health. I have brought information and suggested this is what has been discussed, an impossible decision. I have never, ever, 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 ever said that I was representing the Board of Health or speaking on their behalf. Just not possible, but thank you for that opportunity.
All right. I am going to rule a point of order. So we are going to go back to my initial request, Counselor Donahue. Do you want to make an amendment to your original resolution?
Thank you, Madam Morton. And just as a reminder, I am in fact a counselor in the room, not a Mister, as I think perhaps my colleague from the Town and Director, who is likewise a counselor, not a Mister. The, it is not my intent to amend this, but I think that certainly Counselor Visaskey Moore's position visa the, at the very least, surprising the consultation session, that the Board of Health has not endorsed this position, could be contained within the amendment, and I am prepared, if, if she wishes to, to withdraw the initial amendment and make it specifically to that, that it be amended simply to say that the Board of Health does not endorse the position of the County of Brentford, I believe that could be accommodated. If it is to take the next step further, then I am not amenable to that being, being done through a motion to amend, that I believe that it is, it is no longer even to be considered friendly, but would have to be introduced on its own.
Counselor, there's nothing to be afraid of. You don't have to be afraid to ask to talk.
Okay. So, so Counselor Donahue then is okay with the portion that says that when the presentation on the 4th of February goes forward, it will be noted that the Board of Health was not consulted, and we do not endorse it? Those two things, Michael, are you just saying what?
The endorsement, I will suggest that, and it is not mine to accept, it will certainly be at the discretion of council by their leave, but I think that it is consistent with, with a friendly amendment. But I think that it is consistent with a friendly amendment to agree that this has not been endorsed. If Counselor Wessky Moore insists that there be a statement put forward that it was not consulted, then it is my opinion that that should be introduced as an entirely separate motion and not an amending motion.
Okay. So, I'm okay with the friendly amendment, but then do I have to ask for suspension of procedure to be able to bring forward that, you know, I just want it noted that we were not consulted? And maybe I've said enough that maybe the board will appreciate that, and I'm probably okay that I've told that the board was not consulted, I don't leave that in the motion. So, I'm okay with the friendly amendment as long as that paper that goes on February the Fourth, Jen-Pai knows that the Board of Health was not endorsing it.
I can assure you that is exactly what's going to happen. Counselor Eamon.
Sure. I can support, you know, Counselor Wessky Moore's motion. I could amend to say that the Health Unit made no effort to consult with the County of Brentford. I think, you know, if you want to ensure that you get an accurate picture, you should put both sides out. Yes, I'd probably be nice to that word, James, and go ahead and say that a lot, but thank you.
Okay. So, do we have, so are you making an amendment, Counselor Donahue? Any clarification here unless move on?
So, yeah, I agree and I'm sure if I might then, sorry, bear with me if you would indulge just as I bring back up the report itself. So, right now, it reads that at staff, this is the final, and staff participate in the planned consultations announced for Eastern Ontario. Now, with the approval of Counselor Wessky Moore, if we amended right from that point the wording to the effect of, if not precisely, that we identify that this position has not been endorsed by Brentford County and District Health Unit, that would be the proposed, I believe that is what is being put in front of.
Sorry, Mr. Moore has...
That's what I thought.
...fisted that a bit, so we'll listen to that.
Thank you, Warden, through you to county council. I would suggest, and I believe, and I'd ask Counselor Donahue to confirm, this is what he's saying, that we would add to the, a new sentence to the very end of the motion. That sentence would read, "And further that representatives from the County of Brentford, as part of their presentation to the province of Ontario, will indicate that the Brentford County and District, and District Health Unit, sorry, have not endorsed the following position." Board. Board, yes, thank you.
I believe that that is what Counselor Wessky Moore is seeking. I would like the amendment, the motion to amend to be introduced. I am not seeking the amendment. I'm certainly amenable to the amendment, but I'm going to leave it to the mover, Counselor Wessky Moore, and the secondary, Counselor Peckett, to agree to that amending resolution.
All right. So, Counselor Wessky Moore, are you...
Yes, I agree with that motion. And just before I move on, I do want to offer my apologies to Peter Eamon on my language. Sorry, Peter.
So, we have a mover for the amended motion. Do I have a second? Counselor Peckett. Any further discussion?
Sorry, if I might, are, this is not the amended motion yet, is that not, are we not dealing with the motion to amend?
No, it wasn't.
And approve that, and then go back and approve the motion as amended?
I didn't think my motion was on the floor, Madam Warden.
No, it's not, sure. Ms. Moore? Come back over here. All right. So, we are, we are voting on whether or not we're going to amend the original motion.
That's right.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. So, now we will go back to the amended motion and who is moving and seconding that.
I saw a move, Madam Chair.
Moved by Counselor Donahue, seconded by Counselor Murphy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. I know it was a tough discussion, but we got through it.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden.
All right. We're going to continue lunch, all providing some dinner. So, we're going to start with operations. Counselor Peckett, please.
Thank you, Warden. For your operations committee, which your report recommend is followed under information item one, county structure B203, Peddewal River Bridge update. Note that there that the rehabilitation of Northern Bank to Peddewal River is commenced and is estimated to be complete early in February. And I would just ask, perhaps Director of Public Works has some photographs of that work. I know it's been sent to some of council. I would request that those photographs be sent to all council members.
Thank you. Item two, under winter operations, it says there's been mixed weather. The table there is giving you the number of events and precipitation amounts to date. Something new is, Ontario Regulation 23902 allows me to disclose there are significant weather events. And as to be noted, that the county, there's a table two there, the times when the significant weather events have been experienced and when it has been ended. Item three, monthly treasure report is there for your information. Item four, tenders and quotations, which says in the past, there's a lot of tenders and everything out for maintenance of road system. We're going to send out a letter to all municipalities in case there's some joint work that can be done with the county. Under bylaws, Part Five, Resolution Number OPCC 200104, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that the county council pass a bylaw for the regulation of parking along county roads. And further, that bylaw number nine, 1094, all its amending bylaws, 3195, 5098, 3899, and 2033, and 2072 be repealed. This is, comes late with the parking situation in the town of Brentford. But in order to meet the requirements of Highway Traffic Act, parking regulations must be approved by the passing of a bylaw by the local authority having jurisdiction over the subject roadway. And as be noted, that all existing county bylaws regulating parking on county roads shall be repealed, and one general bylaw will contain the limits for all specific location restrictions as required. All future locations could then be added as an amendment to the bylaw. And it's recommended that where parking restrictions is approved on county road, the local authority will be authorized to enforce the restriction, elect and retain the fines for such interaction. Item six, Resolution Number OPCC 200105, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that the amended contract with pay and estimates are sought, they could be approved, and that the county road pass a bylaw to inform authorities and authorize execution of the amended agreement. Item 16.1, the contract was a period from two per 2016 to maybe three per 2018, two separate years, maybe extended to three years, and in one year period, seven satisfactory service price terms and conditions. Based on the satisfactory performance of the contract, staff will discuss the contract and amended with the supplier. To have a five-year contract from 2020 to 2025, and increasing the amount of salt from 16,000 to 24,000 tons, and then with an approximate 3% increase per year as well as financial impact is in Table Three there for your information. Table Four, it's an indicator of where our neighbors are standing with the salt. So, I think Brentford County is doing very well in regards with policy, GA 01, procurement of goods and services, the approval of contract amendments, and the amount greater than 100,000 is required from the standing committee and council, all which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members, Ben, Eamon, Keller, James, Robinson, from Wessky Moore. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Peckett. And I just noticed that Mr. Perkins has just sent me photos of everyone. So, fact number one, information, Peddewal River Bridge, update. There are two, winter operations. Three, monthly treasures report. Number four, tenders and quotations. Under bylaws, number five, parking regulations. And number six, supply and delivery, delivery of vendors, all. Report is in full. Seeing none, do I have a mover?
So, move.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Can we just keep on with Counselor Moore? Sorry, Counselor, I don't know what you're asking me. All right. I guess we'll break and come back after lunch at say 12:30. Good afternoon, everyone. Have a seat. I'm sure everyone enjoyed their lunch, so we'll begin the afternoon, and I will ask Counselor Moore to send the social services committee report, please.
Thank you, Warden. Members of county council, we are social services committee, which your report, and your hand is followed. Information, item number one, are the housing stats in the cafe, including the childcare stats and the licensed home childcare, Ontario Works is item number three. And just to note that even though the numbers of the base notes were up slightly in October and November of this year, they're still down compared to 2018. Item number four is Ontario's poverty reduction strategy, and tables its correspondence from Minister Todd Smith, Ministry of Children, Community and Social Services, advising that Ontario's poverty reduction strategy is being assessed. And in collaboration with other ministries, the ministry is launching consultations to inform of the development of a new five-year strategy in accordance with the Poverty Reduction Act 2009. Item number five is the Canada Ontario Housing Benefit Program. On table is a letter to Warden Robinson from the Honorable Steve Clark, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, advising of the launch of the Canada Ontario Housing Benefit under the National Housing Strategy, which is scheduled to begin in April 2020. This is a brand-new program, and I know Laura's staff are certainly working to make sure they are up to speed in delivering this new program. Item number six is the 2019 Value for Money Audit Report in regards to the Ontario Disability Support Program. Data is the Ontario Disability Support Program, Value for Money Audit, which is part of the annual report released by the Auditor General of Ontario. I just want to indicate from this report, the one item that really jumped out at me when I went through it, is that since 2009, there's been overpayments to the OESB, OESB, I'm sorry, in the amount of $1.067 billion. Huge amount. And due to the fact that some of these overpayments have taken so long to identify, the government has had to write off 409 million of that. So, that's money that will never be recovered. Certainly seems to be an opportunity for the government to find some savings that they're looking for in other areas. Here would be one where they could certainly find some savings moving forward. Item number seven is the collective bargaining in regards to social housing, QB Local 4425. The collective agreement between the Corporation of the County of Brentford concerning its operation of the Brentford County Housing Corporation and the Canadian Union of Public Employees, QB Local 4425, expired on December 31, 2019. I understand negotiations are underway. Item number eight is the Extended Network Access Pilot. Member Ontario Works Office was selected to be part of the Ministry of Children, Community and Social Services Extended Network Access Pilot. ENA is an Internet network connection which allows for direct access to ministry-specific applications such as Social Assistance Management System, or SAM. It also enables the transfer of payment files away, oh, sorry, transfer of payment files and data extracts to consolidated municipal service managers. The ministry will be migrating away from the ENA connection and transitioning to SAM's access over the Internet by the spring of 2020. Pilot participants selected to test this connection during the period of December 18, 2020, to January 28, 2020, our Algoma, Chatham, Kent, Wellington, and the County of Brentford. Pilot sites will identify any non-SAMs applications which are being accessed via the ENA and will help inform our access to those services and continue following the decommissioning of the ENAs. And the supporting material are part of that report. Item number nine is the Low Income Energy Assistance Program Memorandum of Understanding Renewal. And with that is bylaw, is a bylaw, Resolution Number SSCC 20-01-04, moved by myself as Chair, seconded by committee. The county council passed a bylaw authorizing the County of Brentford, Ontario Works program to enter into a one-year renewal memorandum of understanding agreement with the United Way Simplest Colca for the delivery of the Low Income Energy Assistance Program from January 1, 2020 to December 31, 2020. And further, that bylaw 9-18 be repealed. The background information is included there. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members, Rills, Love, Rigger, Rynall, and Robinson.
Thank you, Chair Rills. We'll start at the beginning of the report, under item number one, housing statistics for the rent cafe. Number two, childcare statistics. Three, the Ontario Works statistics. Four, the Ontario's poverty reduction strategy. Five, Canada Ontario Housing Benefit Program. Six, value for money audit. Seven, collective bargaining. Eight, the Extended Network Access Pilot. Number nine, bylaws, Low Income Energy Assistance Program. Report is in full. Go ahead, mover.
So, move, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
wish to report and recommend as follows. Item number one is the resident population into long-term care homes. Item number two speaks to a meeting that was held in December, a roundtable hosted by the Minister of Long-Term Care, the new instructor, if you will, and his, Minister of Long-Term Care, Dr. Mary Thorson, who is in fact a member for the writing, adjacent to us here in the record in December. In attendance were our Chief Nolan, and also the chief director of Long-Term Care. It was a very productive meeting in continuing to advance the needs and goals and aspirations of us here in Rendford County. Item number three are cyber attacks on Life Labs. There are two types of entities, I think, in the world now, I read, those who have been hacked and those who do not know that they have been hacked, so we can certainly count ourselves the former. Item number four, the accreditation Canada survey. Once again, I have to speak incredibly glorifically of incredibly competent staff who managed to be in the right place at the right time to have some of that reflected on me, that this was entirely driven by the staff of Bonner Manor. So congratulations once again. Item number five, resolutions. Resolution number H-CC-20-01-07, moved by Chair, seconded by committee. That County Council approved the continued operation of short-stay respite beds in homes, two short-stay beds in Bonner Manor and two short-stay beds at the University Lodge. The background is provided by the Council. Item number six is community accountability planning submission to local health integration network advantage funding. Resolution number H-CC-20-01-08, moved by Chair, seconded by committee. That County Council approved the submission of the community accountability planning submission for 2020, 2021 to the Champlain Local Health Integration Network for the continuation of 100% funding from the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care for the senior adult day program services by the submission due date of January 31, 2020. Item number seven is with respect to Rendford County District Health Unit 2020 funding, resolution number H-CC-20-01-13, moved by Chair, seconded by committee. That County Council directed Warden to send a letter to the Rendford County District Health Unit seeking clarification on the rationale for the 10% increase in funding and responding to the following bullet points. A detailed explanation for the dramatic cost increase. Confirmation that this money is only spent on eligible expenses as set out within Health Promotion and Protection Act. An explanation of why municipal reserves are not being used to offset this increase. Estimates of the 2019 surplus and what it is being used for. And finally, an explanation of mitigation efficiency and cost-reduction strategies that have been put in place to reduce the burden on municipal taxpayers. Taxed again is a background that was, I believe, certainly given some exposition in our discussion this morning coming forward of the, I refer to as the ad hoc committee, but certainly the background information is provided therein for Council, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee Members, Bennett, Doncaster, Brills, Love, Murphy, Riguerre, and Robinson.
Thank you very much, Chair Donnie. We'll start at the beginning of your report, under information item number one, resident population. Number two, meeting with the Premier and Minister of Long-Term Care. Three, cyber attacks of Life Labs. Four, the accreditation against Bonner Manor. Resolutions number five, short-stay rescue care bed. Six, community accountability planning submission. Seven, the revenue planning district house unit 2020 funding. Reports of all. Seeing none, all in favour? I'm sorry, could you hold that for us?
Yeah, it would be a delight. I'm working for me this morning.
Seem to be doing this just to you today, so. All right, moved by the Chair and seconded by committee, all in favour? Carrie, thank you very much. Now we will move on to the striking committee, Chair Donnie.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I refuse my words today. To the Council, Corporation of the County of Rendford, members of the County Council, we, members of the Striking Committee, wish to recommend as follows. Bylaws, one, item number one, Auto Valley Recreation Trail, Autonova Trail Advisory Committee. Resolution number ST-CC-20-01-03, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that the Chair of the Auto Valley Recreation Trail, Autonova Trail Advisory Committee be changed from Counselor Peter Eemo to Counselor Robert Sweet. And further, that bylaw number 1-18 be repealed and a revised bylaw to appoint the council committees for the ensuing year or until their successors are appointed be adopted at this meeting of County Council. And the background justifying this bylaw resolution is provided. Item number two, the Algothas of Ikwakagon County of Rendford Economic and Community Development Committee, resolution number ST-CC-20-01-04, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that the members of the Algothas of Ikwakagon County of Rendford Economic and Community Development Committee include Counselor Peter Eemo and Warden Robinson and Counselor Jennifer Murphy as alternate. And further, that bylaw number 1-18 be repealed and revised bylaw to appoint the county committees for the ensuing year or until their successors are appointed be adopted at this meeting of County Council. And Council, once again, the background supporting this resolution is provided. Item number three, Terms of Reference, Health Services and Social Services Provincial Modernization Ad hoc Committee, and we shall now put the cart behind the horse, that the members of the Health Services and Social Services Provincial Modernization Ad hoc Committee include the member of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. And further, that bylaw number 1-18 be repealed and a revised bylaw to appoint the county committees for the ensuing year or until their successors are appointed be adopted at this meeting of County Council. And Council, once again, the background supporting this resolution is provided. Item number three, Terms of Reference, Health Services and Social Services Provincial Modernization Ad hoc Committee, and we shall now put the cart behind the horse, that the members of the Health Services and Social Services Provincial Modernization Ad hoc Committee include the member of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. And further, that bylaw number 1-18 be repealed and a revised bylaw to appoint the county committees for the ensuing year or until their successors are appointed be adopted at this meeting of County Council. And once more, Council, the background information in support of this resolution is provided, all of which is respectfully submitted, Madam Warden, by myself as Chair, Committee Members Brills, Murphy, Riguerre, Rynall, and Robinson.
Thank you very much, Chair Donnie. We'll start at number one, the Auto Valley Recreation Trail, Autonova Trail Advisory Committee. Counselor Doncaster.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just a question, this is, all of these resolutions are referring to the repeal of bylaw number 1-18, which the Striking Committee, is that the right bylaw number? Would there not have been a bylaw in 19?
Should be 1-20. Should be 1-20. There talking some remnants in the striking committee thing.
Again, Madam Warden, I shall, entirely, the board chair, which you correct, I do apologize.
Mr. Moore, are we just going to make that correction, or is that again? Thank you, Counselor Doncaster. Item number two, the Algothas of Ikwakagon County of Rendford Economic and Community Development Committee. And number three, Terms of Reference for the Health Services and Social Services Provincial Modernization Ad hoc Committee. Reports of all. Do I have a mover?
Certainly do. Madam Warden, so.
Thank you, all in favour? Carrie, thank you very much. I believe Counselor Love has the bylaws.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hunt, that the bylaws listed on 9/11 and attached here to its schedule A on the County Council agenda dated January 29, 2020, be deemed read three times and passed.
Thank you. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favour? Carrie, thank you very much. Any notice of motions? Any members' written motions? New business? Counselor Hunt.
Yes, thank you. Through you to perhaps Mr. Perkins or Mr. Foss. I'm wondering, with the ten-year asset management plan, we as representatives of our municipalities have to answer a lot of questions about how we roll it and when the work is being done. I'm wondering, is there any possibility that at least the role of bridges culvert sections of it could be sent to us in an Excel format? Could we be able to sort them for our municipality and the neighbour when neighboring ones affect the rules? So that's one request. And my second request is, when there are changes to the tenure plan that a role or bridge or culvert would be taken off or delayed beyond the tenure period, is perhaps an exception report if something could come out? Because we're telling you, it's a rule that will be done, you know, in five years or something like that, then all of a sudden it moves. And we're, without pulling through the detail, we're not aware of that. So it would just help us in giving information or repair.
Thank you for that. Mr. Perkins, you'd like to comment?
Thank you, Madam Warden. And through you to County Council, let's, yeah, that's actually, that's not an issue at all. We can certainly give you an Excel spreadsheet with the to and from and when the areas, so we'll put that out in Council. The exception report is an excellent idea and a credit back to the group, and I don't see a reason why we don't do that because it does happen when there's a funding issue or, you know, something does get bumped. Like, for example, this year, we bumped a culvert to compensate for what we did to that as well. So, yeah, that's, I think that can easily be done for it and for Council as well.
Thank you very much. Counselor Donnie.
Two things, Madam Warden. First is, last year, we did, after all of the changes that were done at the budget I requested, it came forward at the February meeting, so all of the changes that were made to the budget were incorporated into the budget. And then there was, I think, provided at the February County Council meeting, two revised documents that contained both the general funded budget and each of the individualized budgets, the schedule of reserves, and the capital plan. And I just put forward a request that that could come forward again to the February County Council meeting of a budget document that incorporates all of the changes and revisions that have been done.
Mr. Foss, you'd like to comment?
Thank you, Madam Warden. So that document is complete and we will ensure that it comes forward to the February meeting of the Finance and Admin Committee and then to all County Councils.
Thank you, Counselor Donnie.
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden. The other thing, speaking with both the CAO and the Chief Paramedics, because of as much in the media right now, the coronavirus has captured the attention of the world community, if you will. I know that Chief Nolan has been engaged in this, and I thought it would be appropriate that perhaps he could provide some comments to give Council at the press assemble here, some solid information on what we are doing sort of within our region and within the country, and some more comments on this issue.
All right, thank you. Last, Chief Nolan, and then Ms. Sheeney for comment.
Can I have one? Even that one, yes, no, I don't mind. Sorry, before our chief in Chile speak, I got an email at 11:30 this morning from our bylaw officer saying, you know, it's not an issue yet, but just to be on the safe side. And he's given us a list of things that he's doing, hand sanitizer, masks if we need. So I just thought, you know, that's, we're well ahead of the curve, I think, in Warrage and Share Valley. But if there's anything else you think, I will certainly let our staff know. Thanks for picking that up.
Thank you. You're very welcome. Chief Nolan.
Thank you, Madam Warden, to you and members of Council. Obviously, the coronavirus has been an emerging issue since approximately Christmas time. And as of today, according to the World Health Organization, there have been 132 deaths worldwide and almost 6,000 confirmed cases in over 13 countries. Obviously, what is unique about this coronavirus is that it's not a virus that we yet have a vaccine for, nor do we have an antiviral for. And there's a slight nuance between the two, but if you were watching at CDC last night, I think there was a point of correction there for people to understand the difference. As well, the good news related to the preparation for this is that it is also flu season. So the basic preparations of washing your hands, maintaining a two-meter distance from people that are coughing, sneezing, or otherwise unwell, the pervasive recommendation being that if you are sick, you should not be sharing that with others, either in the workplace or where possible at home. So good personal hygiene, good infection control procedures at a very individual level, I think are number one, sneezing in your elbow, coughing in your elbow, for example. But maintaining a distance is likely the best thing you can do along with washing your hands. Secondary to that, from a corporate perspective, we've been working very closely with Babzado, and she has been messaging to staff, similar messages to the ones that I just relayed to Council, so that as a workplace, we have good resilience and business continuity, whether it be flu or coronavirus that is impacting society. We do know that there are cases now emerging in Ontario. There is a case that is under investigation in Ottawa currently, and it's just a matter of time before this becomes more pervasive through society. There is certainly a general sentiment that the flu unto itself has a greater impact than coronavirus has to date, but as the numbers continue to escalate and travel continues to perpetuate, it's a matter of time before it becomes present within our community. So as a paramedic service, and the paramedics through SARS, we're often the canary in the coal mine, some of the first from an exposure perspective, so we've been providing daily messaging to our staff, reinforcing good infection control procedures, fit testing of staff, and ensuring that we have ample stock to be able to weather the next few months, whether it be N95 masks, gloves, right on through to bioprotective suits. And we have also stood up the Sierra Team, which will be training again this week in our CBRNE capacity around biologic containment and treatment and transport of people who have severe illness. And again, that could be flu, that could be coronavirus, that could be MERS, SARS, or the full gambit. But when you get into managing patients with severe illness and febrile respiratory illness, we have to change our practice. So we no longer aerosolize, for example, or have vapors like we would in general population. So something as simple as a puffer is something that we do not use, and in fact we go to inject the epinephrine as opposed to ventilin, for example. So we have to change our practice. So we are on calls every day with Robinson and our peer group, as well as public health, both locally, regionally, and provincially, sharing information, sharing best practices, and those calls are continuing to evolve. So as of today, we do not have coronavirus in Rendford County, yet we are stood up as though we do. And I think that that's important. And our ask of everyone in these chambers and of the public is to treat the coronavirus with the same diligence that they treat the flu and take the same measures. And if there is a positive travel history to China, specifically Wuhan, and/or a positive contact history, meaning you have shared close proximity space to someone who has been in China, Wuhan, and is symptomatic, then that increases the concern level, and our recommendation is that you give us a call, and we will come and work through the epidemiologics as well as the assessment. We will consult with public health and infectious disease at the Ottawa Hospital, and from there determine the best course of action. So we feel as though our surveillance is very high, yet- So we feel as though our surveillance is very high, yet I don't believe that we can be diligent enough ever so as to prevent spread as it continues around our world. So, Madam Warden, if it's okay, I'll pass it over to Ms. Chee and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to County Council. So, long-term care has obviously been identified as a low-risk environment, but as you're certainly aware, we're obviously looking after a very vulnerable population. We have a very robust surveillance process already in place, as you know, by our outbreak management, respiratory outbreak management. However, we did put a number of added measures in place late last week based on the recommendations coming to us. As it stands right now, there are no specific recommendations for long-term care. Public Health Ontario has indicated they expect those to us by the end of this week. In lieu of that, they have recommended that we follow the guidelines that they have provided to acute care, which is, again, basically to continue to practice good surveillance with our residents. And in terms of our staff and visitors, we have notices posted on all of our doors, which is basically amounts to self-screening, as Chief Nolan indicated, whether individuals have had traveled to that particular area and/or been in close proximity to others that have been to that area. Other than that, we have protective equipment on hand as part of our inventory and will continue to follow the guidelines as they're presented for long-term care. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Chee. Does anyone have any questions, whether the Chief or Ms. Chee? Seeing none? Thank you again. We do have a closed meeting. I'm looking for a motion. All right, before we go into the polls, we're just going to take a five-minute break. So if the meeting has any questions they have of any of the councillors, they can do it. But five minutes, so at 11:11 we'll be back. I'd like to call the meeting afterwards. Do you want to get that back?
I got it. I'm out. I got to get up here. Okay, you want to get that?
I'm looking for a mover and a securer for motion with the closed. Motion raised, we resolve the Council with the closed meeting pursuant to section 239 of Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of discussing the security of property of the municipality or local board, Charles Paradise Daycare, and a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land, county lands offered for purchase and sale. I need to move on to secondly. Moved by Council Rose, seconded by my Councillor Lynch. Any comment?